Okay, everyone, I think we're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started this evening. I'll call the city council meeting for September 23rd to order at 6:03 PM. Before we get started with the agenda, if you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, thank you very much, and we'll go ahead and get the evening's meeting started with a roll call. So Ms. Trimble, if you would do a roll call, please, and I'll note for the record that Councilor Jordan did let us know that she will be here tonight, but will be about 20 minutes late.
Understood.
Anderson. Present.
Bussar.
Present.
Campbell. Curlino. Palmer.
Not here this evening.
Jones.
Present.
Jordan, we will watch for. Nelson. I see his hand up. Nugent.
Present.
Savage.
Present.
Cheryl.
Present.
Zika.
Present.
All right, and we have a quorum.
Great, thank you very much. We have no minutes for consideration this evening, and so the next item is the committee schedule for Wednesday, September 25th. Claire, do you have any changes to the committee schedule for this Wednesday?
No changes that I'm aware of.
All righty, so committee schedule, all materials are online, and that schedule is as stands. The next agenda item is item number four, special presentations and proclamations, of which we have four this evening. Also, during this time, we do hear from our neighborhood councils. We don't have any neighborhood council updates this evening. It is also an opportunity for me just to give a brief overview of what the agenda looks like. We have two public hearings, two land use matters this evening, and so we've got staff presentations and full public hearings for those. We also have a new business item, and this is for the City of Missoula Microsoft licensing software maintenance agreement, so we'll have a staff presentation on that. Those are the big items. We've got a consent agenda as normal, and that'd be it. So we'll start with our first proclamation, which is 10-4 Day. Claire Trimble in the back had a great idea. Why aren't we sharing these on screen? Since they are attached to the agenda, it does give the audience an opportunity to read along and see them, so that is up on screen. I will go ahead and read the proclamation. I do believe that Lori Carter is participating in the meeting and wishes to share some things with us after I read the proclamation, so I'll go ahead and get started now. Whereas nationally, there are approximately 100,000 victims of child physical abuse each year, and in 2021, there were approximately 154 in Montana. Child physical abuse is a serious public health problem. And whereas recognizing the earliest signs of physical abuse may prevent tragic outcomes, and whereas the bruising clinical decision rule known as 10-4 faces can help screen children at risk for abuse by identifying bruising characteristics that have been demonstrated to determine abusive from accidental injuries. And whereas the majority of child physical abuse victims are younger than four years of age, a vulnerable population whose safety and well-being relies on adults to intervene and protect. Now, therefore, I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the state of Montana, hereby recognize the Fourth Day of October 2024 as 10-4 Day. And with that, Ms. Carter, I did see her online, and if you want to go ahead, and I believe that Claire Trimble has enabled you to share your screen, and if you want to go ahead and do that now, we would welcome a few comments. After all these years, you think it'd be a lot easier to unmute yourself. Claire, would you be able to share that infographic that I had emailed to you, please? Mayor Davis, city councilors, staff, and guests, I'm Lori Carter, a pediatrician in Missoula and a child abuse champion for the Montana chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics. I'm very excited that Mayor Davis is to proclaim October 4th, 2024, as 10-4 Day to raise awareness about child abuse. Montana will be the 11th state to recognize 10-4 Day, with the first state having done so in 2019. So why is this day important? I would guess that we all have seen little kids who have bruises on their body, and perhaps some of us have wondered if this could be due to non-accidental injury or physical abuse. 10-4 is the first half of the clinical decision rule, 10-4 faces P, which names the parts of a child's body where bruises would be concerning for possible physical abuse and less likely a site of accidental injury. So as you can see on the infographic, T refers to torso, E, ears, and neck, and 4 is a reminder that any bruising seen in an infant four months of younger should be a flag. Faces refers to various parts of the face, such as the frenulum, which is a tissue that joins the inner lip to the gum line, A is angle of the jaw, C is cheek, the fleshy part of the cheek, E is eyelids, S is subcontraeiva, or the whites of the eyes, and finally, P refers to bruising in a pattern. If any of these bruises are seen on one or more of these parts of the body in a child less than four years old, or any bruise on an infant four months old or less, and there is not a reasonable explanation for the injury, you must be concerned for physical abuse. There are certain people who are mandated reporters, such as childcare staff, teachers, and healthcare workers, but everyone should report concerning injury to a child by calling the CPS hotline. And then there's a QR code that you could click on to see a video that has more information. So really, 10-4 Day is a chance to be able to raise awareness about these bruises on children that should be worrisome for physical abuse. So while we wait to hear if Governor Gianforte will likewise proclaim October 4th as 10-4 Day, I'd like to again thank you, Mayor Davis, for recognizing 10-4 Day and how we all need to keep our children safe. Thank you. You bet, Ms. Carter. Thank you, and thank you for your advocacy and your good work, a very sobering subject, no doubt, and also one that deserves education and awareness. Thank you. Our next proclamation is for Climate Solutions Week. This is in concert with the County of Missoula. So Missoula County and the City of Missoula, here we go. Whereas human-caused climate change is resulting in more extreme weather patterns, wildfire smoke, and extreme temperatures, and scientists are urging us all to rapidly decrease pollution to keep our environment safe and healthy. And whereas we are more aware than ever of achievable solutions to mitigate the climate crisis and become more resilient to its impacts, such as electrifying our buildings, investing in clean energy, and choosing sustainable transportation. And whereas Missoula County and the City of Missoula have committed to implementing the Climate Ready Missoula Plan to using 100% clean electricity in the urban area by 2030, and to a joint Electrify Missoula campaign in collaboration with Climate Smart Missoula. And whereas we all have a part to play in addressing this unprecedented climate crisis, from renters and homeowners to contractors, businesses, and nonprofits, and that we must all address it together with urgency if we are to succeed. And whereas we know that it is not too late to act, that we can and must eliminate fossil fuel use in our transportation, buildings, operations, and lives, and that we can build a better future, not based on the premise of sacrifice, but based on our ability to transform. Therefore, be it resolved, we, Missoula County and the City of Missoula, do hereby proclaim September 28th through October 6th as Climate Solutions Week, which will kick off with the Sixth Annual Climate and Clean Energy Expo in Karis Park, all to inform, educate, and energize into action Missoula County and city residents, so we can meet this moment capably with urgency together. All right. Thank you very much for that item, and also one of incredible importance for education and awareness and action. Our next proclamation is American Indian Heritage Day. Give Claire a minute to bring that up. Okay. Whereas we acknowledge the indigenous peoples upon whose traditional homelands the City of Missoula stands, Salis and Kalisphe people, as well as the descendants of those original stewards of this land, continuing to live in the vital relationship to this place. And whereas numerous American Indian tribes constitute the largest minority group resident in the state of Montana. And whereas we celebrate the vibrant cultures, traditions, and heritage while recognizing the many contributions that American Indians have made in our community. And whereas the state of Montana has proclaimed this day as American Indian Heritage Day. Now, therefore, I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the state of Montana, hereby recognize the Fourth Friday of September 2024, or September 27th, 2024, as American Indian Heritage Day for celebration in ways appropriate to the culture and traditions of the many tribes represented in and near the city of Missoula. All right. I don't believe anybody is here to speak to that. I will mention there are several activities happening on the University of Montana campus and opportunities for folks to participate and continue to expand awareness and education and action together. Our last proclamation this evening is the National Law Enforcement Suicide Awareness Day. So whereas we acknowledge research shows, on average, law enforcement officers experience 178 critical incidents throughout their career, while the average citizen encounters two or three traumatic events in their life. Whereas suicide is one of the leading causes of death of active and retired law enforcement officers. Whereas we celebrate improvements made to support law enforcement officers through tragic circumstances and to remove the stigma of reaching out for help when needed. And whereas this day is recognized as National Law Enforcement Suicide Awareness Day. Now, therefore, I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the state of Montana, hereby recognize the 26th Day of September 2024 as National Law Enforcement Suicide Awareness Day for recognition and appreciation of the law enforcement officers serving the City of Missoula and communities around the country. And I would like to just say that I am grateful that Chief of Police, Collier, brought this to my attention. We were very pleased to be able to share this this evening, and I just want to recognize members of the police force here this evening, and thank you for your continued good service and support to the citizens of Missoula. Mr. Campbell, I see your hand is raised.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry to be there tonight. We'll be done with the weather, but yeah, thank you so much for bringing this proclamation forward. You know, I would tell you, I've been in law enforcement 26 years myself, and I've seen a real change since my first got into it back in the late 90s, fast forwarding to today. Just as you mentioned, the stigma, that was always there decades ago. Being able to talk openly about, you know, things that are bothering you, to talk about your mental health, to being able to have a proper debrief for traumatic events that happen, you know, we're out there in the street, we're dealing with different issues, different events, different traumatic situations. And, you know, I've seen an evolution of that up until a time in my retirement, where we've become, I believe, very proactive in ensuring that our officers are well taken care of. Can we always do more? Of course, we can always do more. I think we've come a long way, but I think part of it is just the recognition that, you know, this is an issue, and certainly this proclamation tonight goes a long way to showing that, you know, that is in the forefront of the mind of leadership in the city here, and that our department, I believe it has done for quite some time now, really invests a lot of the time and effort to make sure our officers on the street are well taken care of in this regard. So thank you very much for this proclamation. Thank you for your time.
Truly, my pleasure, and Councilor Campbell, thank you very much for your comments and support. Appreciate your additional sharing on that. Thank you. Councilor Anderson?
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate you bringing this forward. And I also want to thank all the council members who voted to pass this year's budget. One of the things in there is a continued support of 911 At Ease, which is a service that we provide for both our police and fire departments to access services that, by trained professionals who deal with critical incidences that they deal with, that, you know, there's a lot of support systems that come as a part of our benefits package, but some of those are not necessarily trained professionals in some of the areas and some of the incidences and some of the things that our law enforcement and first responders see. So that was brought to us by some folks a few years ago, and we continue to fund that, and I think that that's a really important commitment to really putting some resources into making sure that we are taking care of those who are taking care of us. And I just also want to commend Missoula Fire Chief Hughes. I know that during his last, the interviews for the latest round of firefighters, one of the key questions that he asked during that interview is, how do you handle these kind of instances? What do you do for self-care? How do you, you know, decompress? And I think that, it may be a simple question, but it's an acknowledgement that that is a part of their everyday culture there, to try to make sure that people are taking care of themselves and seeking help when needed, and that they should be practicing self-care. So thanks, Madam Mayor, for bringing this, and to our law enforcement and first responders for all that they do and for our community.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Councilor Anderson. Appreciate those additional comments and all the support for our law enforcement professionals as we continue to make sure that we do find ways in which folks are provided additional training and support for the intense situations that they sign up and are engaged in every day. All right, that wraps up our proclamations. So we'll now move on to our public hearings. State law and the city council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on certain issues. Following a staff report, the city council and the mayor invite community comment. City council holds a public hearing on the item. A member of council makes a motion, and a vote is taken. The public hearing and the vote take place the same night unless there is a reason to carry that over. And so our first item this evening is item 5.1, which is an ordinance to rezone 123 South Curtis Street and a 10-lot major subdivision. And we have Alex Bramlett here tonight to provide the staff report.
Wonderful. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. One moment here. Okay. Perfect. Well, great. Thank you so much. My name is Alex Bramlett, a planner with Community Planning, Development, and Innovation here this evening because we received a request from IME Cor on behalf of Homes from Missoula LLC for a rezone request from RT 10 Residential to RT 5.4 Residential and a 10-lot major subdivision of 1.58 acres. The property is located at 123 South Curtis Street, which is west of Reserve Street, north of South Third Street West, and is within the River Road neighborhood and City Council Ward 6. Here's a closer view of the property, where you can see existing structures are shown. However, following a site visit from the city's Historic Preservation Officer, it was determined that the structures did not contain historical significance and have since been demolished, so the site is now vacant. The surrounding properties contain detached houses and two-unit houses. Here's an overview of the preliminary plot. There are 10 proposed lots, all ranging from 3,982 square feet to 4,174 square feet. Access to the subdivision will be provided from South Curtis Street on the eastern side of the subdivision to Pitt Lane. There are four total proposed variance requests as part of the project, including Pitt Lane right-of-way design standards, cul-de-sac streets, South Curtis Street design standards, and the block length, all of which I will cover more in a few slides. So here are the subdivision review criteria as outlined in the staff report, which address compliance with the growth policy and zoning, impacts agriculture, agricultural water user facilities, local services, the environment, wildlife and wildlife habitat, and lastly, public health and safety. Our Missoula City Growth Policy land use designation for the property is residential medium density, which allows 3 to 11 dwelling units per acre. This land use designation is intended to fit with many established residential neighborhoods. The current relatable zoning districts are RT 10, R8, R5.4, and RT 5.4. The housing section of the growth policy describes a focused inward approach to development as one that provides opportunity by designing appropriate areas for higher density and housing near existing infrastructure and services. The safety and wellness section of the growth policy encourages healthy lifestyle by promoting a complete active transportation network to increase safety for all transportation systems. Mountain Line Route 9 is located approximately 0.2 miles south of the property at the corner of South Third Street West and South Curtis Street, and the Milwaukee Trail is located less than 300 feet north of the property, and Bentley Park is half mile to the west. The current relatable, or sorry, the current zoning is RT 10 Residential, which currently allows six dwelling units based on the 1.58 acre parcel size. As you can see, the general surrounding zoning is residential with commercial and business zoning around South Third Street West. The applicant is requesting to rezone to RT 5.4 Residential, which would allow a density increase to 12 dwelling units. The setbacks height and allowed building types for the existing and proposed zoning districts are the same. The Natural Resource Conservation Service Soil Survey for Missoula County states the property is classified as urban land, which is not land of agricultural importance. There are no existing agricultural operations on or adjacent to the property. Therefore, no adverse impacts to agriculture are foreseen as a result of the subdivision. The property does contain an existing irrigation ditch along the western boundary of the property, which conveys water through the subdivision to other water users. The applicant is proposing a 12-foot easement to fully encompass the irrigation ditch in order to ensure users can maintain access. There is also an existing private branch extending off the irrigation ditch and is estimated to run along a portion of the northern boundary of the property. The applicant, in coordination with the Orchard Homes Irrigation Ditch Company, is proposing to cap and abandon this private branch prior to filing the final plat. All 10 lots will be served by city sewer and water services. Solid waste disposal will be provided by Republic Services. Parkland dedication for the subdivision would be 0.10 acres, so the Parks and Recreation Department approved parkland through cash donation in lieu of dedication for this project. The property will be served by city fire and police. An installation of a new fire hydrant is required on the corner of Pitt Lane and South Curtis Street. The proposed subdivision will result in an estimated five new school-aged children, and the transportation elements contain four variance requests, which will be covered on the next few slides. So the first variance request is relating to Pitt Lane, which is functionally classified as a low-density local residential street. All 10 lots within the subdivision will be accessed from Pitt Lane, which connects to South Curtis Street right-of-way on the eastern side of the property. Subdivision regulations for low-density local residential streets require a minimum 45-foot right-of-way and 33-foot street width, including two 10-foot travel lanes, two 6-foot parking lanes with curb and gutter, plus 7-foot boulevards and 5-foot sidewalks. The regulations state a parking lane is required on both sides of local residential streets, and sidewalks and boulevards must be provided in all subdivisions and adjacent to all streets. The applicant requests to vary from these regulations for Pitt Lane and proposes a 31-and-a-half-foot right-of-way, a 29-and-a-half-foot street width, and one 7-foot parking lane. The applicant has addressed the variance criteria and the regulations and proposes a 20-foot sidewalk and utility easement alongside and adjacent to the southern portion of Pitt Lane, outlined in red on the plan at the bottom of the slide. This would include a 7-foot boulevard, 5-foot sidewalk, and 8-foot utility easement. These easements are designed to contribute to the functionality of the 31-and-a-half-foot right-of-way while also maintaining the proposed density of the subdivision. The 7-foot parking lane is on the north side of Pitt Lane and extends the length from Lot 3 to Lot 10. There are no driveway curb cuts or access to the north, which would maximize the amount of parking that can occur within the one parking lane. As you see, the parking lane does not provide spaces near the intersection of Pitt Lane and South Curtis Street, highlighted in blue on the plan at the bottom of the screen, and this is due to topographic constraints. The image to the right demonstrates there is a roughly 23% existing gray change within the first 26 feet of Pitt Lane, which limits the ability to place parking across lots 1 through 3. The second variance request is for Pitt Lane cul-de-sac. The regulations prohibit cul-de-sac streets and further state if they are approved by variance, then an additional eight set of standards apply. The applicant is also requesting to vary from one of those standards, which requires a water permeable center island for cul-de-sacs radius over 45 feet. The applicant has addressed the variance criteria and proposes a cul-de-sac that meets the International Fire Code standard detail for cul-de-sac streets as shown on the left-hand side. Pitt Lane right-of-way continues to the western boundary, so if future projects occur on the property adjacent to the west, connection to Pitt Lane is possible, and the cul-de-sac may no longer be needed. Therefore, the applicants are proposing a temporary cul-de-sac easement outlined in blue on the plan within a common area that is roughly 6,000 square feet. The third variance is relating to South Curtis Street, which is functionally classified as an urban collector without parking and requires a minimum 80-foot right-of-way, including two 10-foot travel lanes, two 5-foot bike lanes, which equals approximately 31-foot wide street width, plus the 7-foot boulevard and 5-foot sidewalks. The applicant has addressed the variance criteria and proposes to dedicate 3.9 feet of right-of-way in addition to the existing 60-foot wide right-of-way, and proposes half-street improvements, which would include a 7-foot boulevard and 5-foot sidewalk along the entire front edge of the subdivision adjacent to South Curtis Street, as shown on the cross-section image at the bottom of the screen. The half-street improvements would create sidewalk connectivity along South Curtis Street, providing additional safe pedestrian access to the school bus stop across the street from the subdivision, which is also where the Milwaukee Trail passes. The applicant is also proposing a 1-foot no-access strip along the entire eastern boundary of Lot 1 in order to limit the vehicular access from South Curtis Street to Pitt Lane only, and provide further mitigation for the variance request for reduced urban collector right-of-way. The fourth and final variance is for block length. The regulation allow for a maximum block length of 480 feet, and the applicant is proposing 512. The narrow and elongated shape of this property, that is 110 feet in width and 623 feet in length, allow, along with limited access to one public right-of-way, minimizes the road configuration options, while also optimizing residential density potential as called for by the growth policy. Granting block length allows Pitt Lane to provide safe access to all lots within the subdivision. To help mitigate the extended block length, the applicant is proposing a 20-foot non-motorized access and utility easement in the southwesternmost portion of the property as outlined in green on the center of the image. This easement provides future connection potential from the pedestrian easements in the Craftsman Place subdivision to the southwest, outlined in purple, through the property to the north for future connection to the Milwaukee Trail. The impacts on the natural environment, wildlife and wildlife habitat, and public health and safety are the final criteria pieces. As you can see, the property is in an urbanized area surrounded by existing infrastructure and services. The property is mapped shaded Zone X and is therefore not within a floodplain regulated by the City of Missoula and does not require special floodplain permits. This property does not contain any natural surface water features or wetlands. The seasonal high groundwater doesn't rise within 15 feet of the surface of the property. There are no areas with slopes greater than 25% or other apparent hazards. The Montana County Weed Management Act requires developers and owners to revegetate with beneficial species at the first opportunity after disturbance of soil. The applicant has submitted a weed management and revegetation plan in compliance with the regulations. No adverse impacts to natural environment, wildlife, and wildlife habitat, or public health and safety are foreseen as a result of the subdivision. There are six recommended motions from staff this evening. Please note that the rezone motion is first, followed by the four variance requests. Because if these don't get approved, the subdivision as proposed cannot be approved. And with that being said, staff recommend the following. The first motion is for a city council to approve the adoption of an ordinance to rezone the property from RT 10 to RT 5.4. The next four motions relate to the variance requests, and staff is recommending city council approve all four variances, allowing Pitt Lane to deviate from the design standards with the cul-de-sac, allowing South Curtis Street to deviate from the design standards, and the 512-foot block length. The final recommended motion is for city council to approve the Carrera Commons subdivision preliminary plat, subject to the recommended conditions of approval based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff report. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Bramlett. Really appreciate that. Or is there anybody that is representing the sponsor applicant or developer that wishes to add to the presentation this evening? to add to the presentation this evening? Come on up. Make sure the microphone's on here. Please spell your name for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Tamara Ross, T-A-M-A-R-A, Ross, R-O-S-S. I am here as a staff member of IMAG. We have Joe Denner and Danny Oberwiser chimed in online as well. Our team is here to represent Homes of, sorry, Homes for Missoula LLC. I tripped up on that during planning board, and I was really trying not to do that again, for the Carrera Commons subdivision. And then I'd just like to briefly express that our team believes this project, if it were to be supported, incorporates residential homes in an area that aligns with the growth policy. This would be an infill project to achieve medium density, which hopefully aligns with the existing Armazula growth policy as it is proposed in a location where existing infrastructure exists such as relatable or similar residential uses, transportation, water and sewer, and utility infrastructure that we hope helps reduce environmental impact on rural vacant lands. We appreciate the time that Alex has put into her staff report, as well as the communication throughout this entire process and the project that is before you, and we're happy to be a part of the project and here for any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Appreciate your additional information and being here for questions. We will now turn it over to city council for questions. Are there council members that have questions for the project or on the project this evening? Not seeing any in the room? Not seeing any online? All right. So then we will move ahead to the public hearing, and we will ask Councilor Nugent, Land Use and Planning Chair, to read the series of motions. We'll hear all those motions and take public comment on all of them, and then we'll come back for votes.
Thank you, Mayor Davis.
You bet.
I move city council adopt an ordinance rezoning the subject property located at one twenty-three South Curtis Street legally described as south one hundred and ten feet of Lot Five in Curtis and Major's Edition as described in Book one zero eight-eight at page five forty-five, Micro Records of Missoula County, located in the southwest one quarter of Section Twenty Township thirteen, North Range nineteen west, PMM, Missoula County, Montana, from RT ten residential two-unit townhouse to RT five point four residential two-unit townhouse, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law on the staff report. I further move city council approve the variance request from Article Three, Section Three dash zero-two-zero, Table Two A, Section Three dash zero-two-zero-four N, and Section Three dash zero-two-zero-fifteen D one of the city subdivision regulations to allow Pit Lane to deviate from design standards of low-density local residential street, including the requirement for parking lanes, sidewalks, and boulevards to be provided on both sides of the street. I further move city council approve the variance request from Article Three, Section Three dash zero-two-zero-point-five-point A of the city subdivision regulations prohibiting cul-de-sac streets, further approving the variance from Section Three dash zero-two-zero-point-five-point B seven for a cul-de-sac street design standard. I further move city council approve the variance request from Article Three, Section Three dash zero-two-zero, Table Point Two A, and Section Three dash zero-two-zero-three-H-two of the city subdivision regulations to allow South Curtis Street to deviate from the design standards of urban collector without parking streets, including the requirements for parking lanes, sidewalks, and boulevards to be provided on both sides of the street. I further move city council approve the variance request from Article Three, Section Three dash zero-three-zero-point-two-A-two of the city subdivision regulations to exceed the four hundred and eighty-foot maximum block length and allow for a proposed block length of five hundred and twelve feet. And finally, I move city council approve the Serrera Commons subdivision preliminary plat application, subject to the recommended conditions of approval based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law on the staff report.
Thank you very much, Councilor Nugent. All right. So motions are on the floor. That means the public hearing is open, and we are ready for public comment. So if there's any members of the public that wish to come forward and speak this evening, our public comment is three minutes or less. We just ask you to share your name, and I have a timekeeper up here to help you with that three minutes. So anybody in the audience wanting to give public comment on this agenda item? Not seeing any in the room? How about online? Is there anybody online wishing to give public comment tonight on this agenda item? Okay. Not seeing any online either, then that does close the public hearing. It does bring it back to council for any comments or questions that council has, if there are any. Not seeing any? Councilor Jordan? And for the record, Councilor Jordan is in attendance, Ms. Trimble.
Yeah, thank you for that. I apologize for being late. I just want to start by thanking staff for doing a good job. They do always do a good job in assessing whether or not these development rezones are in line with our city policies, and I appreciate the time that they take to follow the rules that we've created. As counselors, though, we can change these rules, but we can also vote no rezone requests. We're not legally required to approve these, and regardless of what we call it, these rezone requests are spot zoning. They may be in accordance with our growth policy, build inward, but the rezones are spot zoning, and this makes dense development in Ward Six very lucrative. As we've seen time and time again in Ward Six, developers are seeking maximum density. They say they're contributing to housing affordability by saturating the market with market value homes. Did some research today, and there is no evidence that towns like Missoula with high livability scores ever see a decrease in market values regardless of supply. These developments will not create affordable housing. They will only create rich developers. Further, by saturating poor neighborhoods where there are empty lots or by demolishing homes that are not worth keeping, so developments are profitable, we're changing the character of these neighborhoods. Ward Six is largely single-family homes or duplexes, not multiplexes, except for the recent developments that have gone for rezones to accommodate their market plan. Each time a rezone request is made in Ward Six, it is clear that safety is compromised because the sidewalks are not complete. It's almost impossible to walk more than two or three blocks in the entirety of Ward Six without missing sidewalks, except Third Street and Eaton. Folks near this development will have to walk or ride their bikes in the street to get to the bus stops or the bike trails. I'm deeply opposed to this development because it creates a further safety risk in Ward Six, which struggles already with basic infrastructure. This development does not match the character of the neighborhood, and it is spot zoning, which may be legal but not ethical. Thank you for letting me comment.
You're welcome, Councilor Jordan. Thank you. Any other comments from council members? All right. Not seeing any. Then that does wrap up our public hearing. We will move on to, and public hearing and council comment, we'll now move on to the votes, and Ms. Trimble will take each of these, each of these motions individually for a roll call vote, please.
Understood. Beginning with the first motion, which is adopt an ordinance rezoning the subject property at one-two-three South Curtis Street. Beginning with Anderson.
Yes.
Basera.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Arlena.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan? No. Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And Vazika? That's ten in favor, one opposed, and that passes. Next motion is the motion to approve the variance request of the subdivision to allow Pit Lane to deviate from the design standards, including the requirement for parking lanes, sidewalks, and boulevards to be approved on both sides of the street, or provided on both sides of the street. Beginning with Basera. Campbell?
Yes.
Arlena?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan? No. Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vazika?
Yes.
And Anderson? That's ten in favor, one opposed. Next motion is to approve the variance request prohibiting cul-de-sac streets and allowing this to be a cul-de-sac design. Beginning with Campbell.
Yes.
Arlena?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan? No. Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vazika?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Basera? Our next vote is a motion to approve a variance request, requesting to deviate from the design standards of urban collector streets without parking, including the requirement for parking lanes, sidewalks, and boulevards that are provided on both sides of the street. Beginning with Arlena. Jones?
Yes.
Jordan? No. Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vazika? Anderson?
Yes.
Basera?
Yes.
And Campbell? Our next vote is to approve the variance request from the subdivision regulations to exceed the four hundred and eighty-foot maximum block length and allow for a proposed block length of five hundred and twelve feet. Beginning with Jones.
Yes.
Jordan? No. Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vazika?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Basera?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
And Ferguson? Our next vote is to approve the Carrera Commons subdivision preliminary plat application, subject to the recommended conditions of approval based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law found in the staff report. Beginning with Jordan. No. Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vazika? Anderson?
Yes.
Basera?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Arlena?
Yes.
And Jones? That was our final vote. They appear to all be ten in favor, one opposed.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Trimble, and that concludes Agenda Item five point one. Thanks for the thorough staff report and folks that were here as part of the presentation. We now move on to Item five point two. This is an ordinance to rezone twenty-one thirty-nine South Seventh Street West from R five point four residential to RM one point five multi-dwelling. And Zoe Walters is here to provide the staff presentation.
Yes, hello. Thank you. My name is Zoe Walters. I'm Associate Planner in Community Planning, Development, and Innovation, and Development Services has received a request from Harrison Scott to rezone the property located at twenty-one thirty-nine South Seventh Street West. The applicant requests to rezone the property from R five point four residential to RM one point five residential multi-dwelling. The rezoning, if approved, will result in a standard zoning district under Title Twenty, which cannot be conditioned. Standard zoning districts must apply the same requirements to all parcels within the same zoning district equally. This sort of property is located at twenty-one thirty-nine South Seventh Street West, east of Reserve Street and south of Third Street West. This location is within the Franklin to the Fort neighborhood and city council Ward Six. The property is located within an established service area for Missoula hospitals, city fire, and police departments. Here's a closer view of the parcel outlined in red. The subject property is approximately nine thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet in size and is currently vacant. The subject property is surrounded by single-detached dwelling units in each direction. Shown here is the current land use destination with the subject property outlined in red. The applicable regional plan is the twenty thirty-five Armazula City Growth Policy. This sort of property has a current land use destination of residential high. This destination is for residential building types ranging in density from twenty-four dwelling units per acre to forty-three dwelling units per acre. The use is identified for areas within the core of the community where city services and infrastructure are readily available. Structures may be a range of dwelling types from small lot, single dwellings, to larger-scale multi-dwelling developments. The city growth policy indicates the RM one thirty-five, RM one forty-five, RM one point five, and RM zero point five districts are current relatable zoning districts within the residential high destination. These zoning districts are all residential districts and primarily permit residential and civic uses. Here's the current zoning map with the subject property outlined in red. This subject property is currently zoned R five point four. Shown here is the proposed zoning map. The applicant requests to rezone from R five point four residential to RM one point five residential multi-dwelling. The RM one point five zoning district complies with the growth policy as it is a current relatable district to the residential high land use destination. The current R five point four zoning is not consistent with the land use destination. The surrounding RM two point seven and R five point four zoning is not consistent with the corresponding residential high land use destination. The city growth policy calls for a focus inward approach to encourage infill development in the urban core where infrastructure already exists and promotes mixed-use compact development and enhance connectivity while limiting sprawl and promoting efficient use of existing infrastructure. The proposed RM one point five zoning would increase density in an area with existing infrastructure. A bus stop serving Mountain Line Route two is located approximately point two miles south of the subject property, and Mountain Line Route eight is within point three miles. The Milwaukee Trail is located approximately point six miles to the north of the property and can be accessed by traveling north along Kemp Street and South Curtis Street. There are sections of sidewalk along South Seventh Street West, but the pedestrian pathways are not fully connected here. There is a curbside sidewalk on Lynn Lane to the east of the subject property, but otherwise, this portion of South Seventh Street West does not have sidewalks. Franklin Park is point three miles from the subject property, and the property is served by city water and sewer services. New structures will be required to connect to city sewer and water at the time of development, and the parcel is currently served by city fire and police. Here's a comparison between the existing and proposed zoning districts. The existing R five point four zoning district allows for detached house, lot-line house, and mixed-use building types. The proposed RM one point five zoning district would allow for additional building types, including two-unit townhouse, three-unit townhouse, duplex, multi-dwelling house, and multi-dwelling building. The existing R five point four zoning district, which has a minimum parcel area per unit of five thousand four hundred square feet, would allow for one dwelling unit on the property. In the proposed RM one point five zoning district, the minimum area per dwelling unit is one thousand five hundred square feet, and with the nine thousand seven hundred and fifty square foot property, it would allow up to a maximum of six dwelling units. The existing R five point four zoning district requires a front and rear setback of twenty feet, seven point five feet on interior sides, and ten feet on street sides. The proposed RM one point five zoning district requires a front and rear setback of twenty feet, five feet on the interior sides, and ten feet on street sides. The maximum building height permitted in the existing R five point four district is thirty or thirty-five feet, depending on the roof pitch. The maximum building height permitted in the proposed RM one point five district is forty-five feet. The proposed RM one point five zoning district would allow additional permitted uses provided in Title Twenty, Table Twenty point zero-five dash one. Some of these uses include library, college, fraternity or sorority, office, personal improvement service, and residential support services. Staff's recommendation is based on the review criteria provided in Title Twenty zoning ordinance. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the growth policy's vision for balanced community development and increases diverse housing options. Subject property can be served by sewer, water, motorized, and non-motorized facilities. The rezoning considers the effect on motorized and non-motorized transportation systems because the property is within the Missoula Urban Transportation District, is served by public transit, and is located approximately point six miles from the Milwaukee commuter trail. The rezoning promotes compatible urban growth because it helps to implement the focus inward approach of the city growth policy and allows for increased density within a residential high land use destination where services and infrastructure already exist. The rezoning will promote public health, public safety, and general welfare by providing for residential uses in an area with access to public sewer, water, emergency services, streets, schools, and other urban services. The rezoning to RM one point five is suitable for the subject property and considers the character of the district because it is adjacent to parks, trails, schools, medical facilities, and public transportation. The RM one point five is a residential zoning district consistent with the surrounding residential districts and uses. The rezoning is in the best interest of the city because the rezoning of monthly recommendations of the city growth policy for areas designated of the city growth policy for areas designated as residential high. The RM 1.5 zoning destination is listed in the growth policy as currently relatable to lands within the residential high land use destination, and the current zoning is not a current relatable zoning district. On to number three, Planning Board voted in favor of a recommendation to City Council to adopt an ordinance rezoning the subject property from R 5.4 to RM 1.5. And Title 20 states for a formal protest petition opposing a zoning amendment, these must be submitted to the zoning officer or on the public record before the City Council's vote. A protest petition is valid if signed by the owners of 25% or more of adjacent property owners. When a valid protest petition has been submitted, approval of a zoning amendment requires a 2/3 majority vote of City Council members present in voting. There are 21 adjacent property owners within 150 feet of the subject property proposed to change. Development Services has received three petitions that have been certified by the city clerk, and this is only 14% of adjacent property owners. And at this time, the City Council's 2/3 majority vote is not required. So with that, staff recommends City Council adopt an ordinance to rezon the subject property located at 2139 South Seventh Street West from R 5.4 residential to RM 1.5 multi-dwelling based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Zoe. Are there any members of the sponsor or developer here to add to the presentation? Come on up.
Hey, I'm Harrison Scott. H-A-R-R-I-S-O-N. And Scott is S-C-H-U-T-T. I am the applicant and the future designer and builder of this development. Just a few details I wanted to clarify in regards to this project is, really, my intention for the project, first of all, is obviously to rezone this property. I would like to TED the property into two to three TOUs and build two to three two-story, single-family units. Not only is it my intention, but it's the highest density I can build to within my means while complying with parking and fire regulations that are present there because there's no alley in the property, so... It poses difficult... Actually, it would not be possible for me to build to the highest density of RM 1.5, being six units. And in regards to the actual RM 1.5 zoning, I just wanted to make it known that I originally applied for RM 2.7 because that's all I needed to make my plan happen. But per the city growth policy and the zoning department recommendations, I chose 1.5 being the least dense of the high-density zoning. So all of that to say, I'm applying for RM 1.5 to align with the city growth policy, but cannot build to its highest potential, or densest potential, rather. And in regards to some public comments and worries in the neighborhood, I have no intention of building a six-unit, 45-foot, sixplex. And I'm here for questions. Thanks for your time, and thank you to Zoe for all the work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Schutt, appreciate you being here. All right. Then we will turn this over to questions from council. Any questions from council members? Nope, not any in the room or online? Well, it's council members only, yeah. Public comment will be in a minute, thank you. All right, no questions from council. Then we will go ahead and open up the public hearing, which means we'll hear the main motion first, and then that will open up the public hearing. And so we'll turn this over to Counselor Nugent.
Less motions this time, good, all right. I move City Council adopt an ordinance to rezone the subject property located at 2139 South Seventh Street West and legally described as lots 14, 15, and 16 in Block 73 of Daily Edition Number 2 to the City of Missoula, Missoula County, Montana, together with a north one-half of the vacated alley in said block lying south of and adjacent to said lots of 14, 15, and 16 located in Section 29 Township 13 North, range 19 West PMM from RM 5.4 residential to RM 1.5 residential multi-dwelling based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff report.
Great, thank you very much, motions on the floor. This opens up our public hearing, and now, public comment is welcome, come on up.
From the Mr. Spitzmacher, S-P-I-T-Z, M-E-C, Chair, from the aerial photograph that I've seen, those look like ranch-style homes. And we're gonna park a two-story building in all these wonderful ranch-style homes? It's gonna stick out like a sore thumb.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Spitzmacher. Are there other members of the public that wish to come on up? Come on up.
My name's Walter Dinges. I'm the recent owner of 2145 South Seventh Street West, next door on the west side of 2139 South Seventh Street West. In regards to the multifamily dwellings, I'm just like this gentleman here that mentioned that these are ranch-style homes, they're single-level homes, not a multifamily, not two stories. The whole side of that street is that way, the cul-de-sac is that way. On the opposite side of Seventh Street, that's all single-level. By the irrigation ditch, yes, there are some two-story townhouses there. But the ones facing the streets, in the cul-de-sac, and behind, they're all single-level homes. People that live there have told me that they don't want to see a multifamily. I don't want to see a multifamily there. I've worked hard to get to where I'm at, and I don't want to live next to multifamily homes, and there's other ones that's mentioned that, too. In regards to the two to three units being built on there, the two stories, that there, I don't personally see where they can fit in on that property with adequate parking and the safety of the neighbors' property with that narrow of a lot. And then also, there was mentioned that there's no sidewalks in that area. 2145 South Seventh Street West has sidewalks in front of that residence, and they've had it there for years. So there has been sidewalks there, but yes, that's the only one. So my concern is also, being getting ready to retire, I don't want to go and live next to multifamilies and have issues coming up because they're getting crammed in there. There's other residents that have mentioned things like this to me. They're not here, I am, I'm speaking up for them. And I believe there was more than three protests sent in. And I know that there's been more that's not within that 150 feet, but 150 feet's not a lot of space to sit there and say, "We don't want this." You have to go out a little bit further because this does affect neighborhoods, not just what's living right next to them, the neighborhoods. So I take the consideration that I give, and I hope you guys kind of dwell on it and remember that we need to preserve some of our residential neighborhoods out here and stop cramming them in. There's a lot of it getting built around here. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Dinges. Other members of the public that wish to come up and make comment tonight? Okay, not seeing any in the audience. How about online? Any members of the public wanting to make public comment on this agenda item? Okay, I'm not seeing any. That wraps up our public comment. We'll now move on to parliamentary debate. So back to City Council members for your comment or questions. Counselor Carlino?
Yeah, I'm gonna be supportive of this rezone. You know, clearly, we need more homes in Missoula, and you know, if we don't build in and up, we're gonna be building out and urban sprawling and destroying more of our natural environment. To speak to the parking mandates, it sounds like, you know, although we're gonna allow more housing with votes like this, we're still blocking, like, you know, a lot of housing by forcing developers to turn a bunch of land into concrete, whether or not they'd like to. So we're still blocking a lot of housing with our parking mandates, and also, that's just terrible for the environment as well, of course. And then just to speak to the single-family homes next to multifamily homes, you know, we saw through a code reform study that, you know, Missoula's been segregated by our zoning off of race and class and income. And I think we should put an end to that segregation through zoning. And multifamily housing should be allowed just in the same places as single-family housing, citywide, to help protect our environment, to help end the segregation of zoning and allow for more housing options. So I'm glad that we're approving things like this, and hopefully we'll get rid of some of those other burdensome things like the parking mandates.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Carlino, and Counselor Jordan.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just, again, wanted to thank staff for the work that they're doing on this. I know that they're following rules that we have voted in, City Council members. But again, this is another development proposal that just does not fit the character of the neighborhood. We are going to cram more people into a space where there are no sidewalks. Seventh Street is turning into a three-way where people are exceeding the speed limit, and we don't have complete sidewalks in the neighborhood. I don't think... Actually, I know for a fact that constituents in my ward are not opposed to development. This lot's been sitting empty for a long time. But what we would like to see is sensible development. And I get that we don't want to move into wildland, and we don't want urban sprawl, but we need sensible development. And this lot is not... It should not have more than a duplex on it, which is the state minimum. Again, as a City Council, we can vote no to rezon requests. It's not that we cannot, that we're backed up against a wall. But proposals like this don't fit the character of the neighborhood. They increase the safety risks for residents because there's no place to walk safely. And it's just disappointing that we're infilling maximum density in one of the lowest-income neighborhoods in town, which, you know, speaks to kind of what Daniel was talking about. If we applied a DIY, a D-I, sorry, a DEI lens, we would see more of these developments in other parts of town, but instead, they're going into our poorest neighborhoods. And it affects the quality of life for people in my ward. And it's frustrating as heck that we keep voting in these maximum developments in wards that are low socio-economic, where people work really hard to get their way of life and can't have peaceful enjoyment of their property. And so I'll definitely be voting no on this. It's just disappointing that we have this growth policy that doesn't take into consideration genuinely considers neighborhood character and safety. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Jordan and Counselor Anderson.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor, and I will be in support of this. And I think that, as Mr. Carlino said, that filling in helps from making sure that we are not spreading out because land is not being made anymore. And so we need to basically maximize what we can. In regards to the parking, you know, I would love to, if Missoula had robust multimodal transit, public transit, but that is not where we are at, and we are still a car-centric community. And, you know, when it is 25 below, there is a need to get to and from with cars, and that's just something that we can't control. So I don't necessarily think it is a burden to understand that the reality of the situation is that we are... We do have cars, we want to incentivize and provide many other alternatives as possible, but we can't just completely eliminate parking because, you know, I know some places such as in Bozeman, I mean, people are having to park blocks and blocks and blocks away from where they live, and that is just not tenable. I also think in terms of development, I mean, there are requirements from developers to build out the infrastructure that is missing in some of these neighborhoods. And so, yes, the density, you know, may not, as some people feel, fit the neighborhood character, but that is helping with getting various components of sidewalks built and infrastructure built. And if we just completely say a particular area is a no-build, no-go zone, well, then why would we try to invest in infrastructure in that place? So it is a bit of a chicken and an egg, which is frustrating, I absolutely understand. There are various, very, very large parts of Ward 5 that do not have any sidewalks. So this is not just a ward, a certain ward issue. So I will be in support of this. I hope that the developer sounds like he is committed to trying to, you know, make something that works for the neighborhood, single-family homes. And I look forward to seeing what it has, what it's done, so I'll be supporting this.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson and Counselor Jones.
Just briefly, I think some good things have been said. I'm gonna vote in support of this. To me, this is an excellent example of an incremental increase in density, which is exactly what we are always talking about with our growth policy and with our code reform project for the neighborhood. I understand that it's changed. I understand that this is something different coming in. But we have a lot of neighborhoods in Missoula where there's different patterns of development across them. And frankly, I think it creates a more robust neighborhood. And all of the one-story houses have the potential for a second story to be added on to them, and I've seen that in many places. I would anticipate 10, 20, 30 years from now, the neighborhood will look very different, not just because of this development, but as people change those houses over time and create more density. So I'm in favor of this and look forward to voting.
Thank you, Counselor Jones and Counselor Campbell.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I appreciate the comments from my colleague, Councilwoman Anderson. I too will be in support of this. I do believe most of your proposals is incremental in nature. I think it, in consideration of hoops that are still yet to be gone through with this development, on the development review side of things, you know, there are some limiting factors there, secondary access, of course, being one of them. I think what you're gonna end up being left with there is a modest-size gain in density that may not be too unlike anything that's in that neighborhood now. So to me, insofar as the here and now and with that strictly this zone change, to say that it would be improper modification overlaid upon the growth policy would be incorrect. So I'll be in support of this.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Are there any additional council comments or questions? All right. That wraps up our parliamentary debate. We'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, Ms. Trimble, when you're ready.
All right, voting on Item 5.2, to adopt an ordinance to rezone the subject property located at 2139 South Seventh Street West. Beginning with Nelson.
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Azika?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Jordan?
No.
And that's ten in favor, one opposed.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Trimble, and thank you for the staff report, Zoe, and Mr. Schutt for being available for presentation and questions. That does wrap up, then, that agenda item. Thank you, members of the public, coming down to provide public comment. That's Item 5.2, that concludes. We now move on to new business. Our new business item this evening is 6.1, and that is the City of Missoula Microsoft Licensing Software Maintenance Agreement. Jesse Nied is here to present, he is online. I just want to make sure, Jesse, that you are available. I know that you're remote this evening, and I see you available.
Yep, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, you're just a little bit muffled. So maybe if there's something you can do about that, let's hear that one more time.
Yeah, I'll scoot closer to the laptop, I'm at a hotel, unfortunately.
That sounds much better, thank you very much. Appreciate you being conscientious of that, thank you.
No problem. Thank you all for the time tonight. I apologize for bringing new business rather than running through committee, but scheduling didn't work out for us, and we need to hurry this along so we can not breach a contract by the end of the month. So I'm gonna try and keep it short and sweet. We're looking for authorization for the mayor to sign- to sign on our Microsoft License Renewal Agreement. This is a three-year agreement that we'll be signing for the first year. And the Microsoft licensing accounts for about half of our repair and maintenance budget in the IT budget. And the quote that's attached to the materials tonight is not yet final, which is part of the scheduling headache we've been going through. But it does demonstrate some potential savings that we're hoping to recognize through some rightsizing that we've done in recent weeks with folks in every department of the city. We've been partnering with folks across the city to try and bring down costs after the last budget cycle and the forecast that the next year is going to be tight. We took it upon ourselves to try and rightsize some stuff and reset the baseline as we look to modernize some of our Microsoft tools. With that summary, I'm open for questions.
All right, Jesse, thank you very much for making yourself available and really appreciate the, all of the staff, and in particular, in this case, the IT staff looking for potential savings, right sizing particular software licenses for particular staff needs. So that's really what this contract exemplifies. And just see if there's any questions from council on this. No questions? All right. Any online? All right, no questions online. So we'll go ahead and hear a main motion, and I will look to President Cheryl for this.
Yeah, thanks. I recommend that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign a three-year software maintenance agreement renewal for Microsoft licensing, not to exceed the 460,000 budget authority.
Thank you very much. Now, we would welcome public comment on this agenda item. Any public comment? Come on up, Mr. Spitzmacher.
I'm not in favor of Microsoft. When I go out and buy an HP computer, I do not like to be held hostage by Microsoft on their software package that I got to pay for. I like my Google phones where I don't have to be held hostage. And I can go to Motorola and buy these open unlocked units and take it to any phone provider. And I'm ready to tell TrackPhone to go stick it. I'm going to Verizon. And how much, is there a competitor out there besides Microsoft? Because I think the world is being held hostage by Microsoft and all their maintenance agreements and so forth. I'm surprised Linux or another provider couldn't come into competitiveness because how do you buy a vehicle? You go straight to one ultimate dealer? Or do you go to other dealers to comparably buy an affordable package? And by the way, what is the cost of Microsoft's package that it is right now?
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Spitzmacher. And for the record, the city does follow a procurement policy. That procurement policy is available online if anybody's curious how the city does do its open, transparent procurement practices. All right, any other public comment on this agenda item? Not seeing any in the room and not seeing any online. All right, that wraps up our public comment. We bring it back to council, see if there's any council questions or comments. All right, not seeing any. Then we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, Ms. Trimble, when you're ready.
Absolutely. Voting on our new business item, 6.1, approval and authorization to sign a software maintenance agreement with Microsoft for city licensing. Beginning with Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Vasika.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Basara.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Carlino.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
That's 11 in favor, none opposed.
Okay, thank you very much, folks. That takes care of item 6.1. And we'll now move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda were approved in city council committees to be placed on the consent agenda to save time at council meetings by voting on them as a package. The city clerk will read the list aloud and also put it up on screen so citizens watching on MCAT will know what is on the consent agenda. We'll invite community comment on these items before they're voted on. So, Ms. Trimble, take it away.
Trying to get it readable size. All right, on tonight's consent agenda, we're beginning with a motion to approve the county's payroll or claims for checks dated September 24th, 2024 in the amount of $1,431,044.97. Moving on, we have a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a one-year services agreement with Black Knight Security and Investigations to provide services in City Hall and Council Chambers. Next, we have a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to renew the existing EMS contract for five years with the Missoula Emergency Services Agency, also known as MESN. Next up, we have a motion to approve and authorize Chief Hughes to accept the Safer Grant Award in the amount of $7,53,780 to fund the wages for 20 firefighters for three years. And our final motion on the consent agenda is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding between the IAFF 271 and the City of Missoula for the creation of a new fire training coordinator position.
All right, thank you very much. Is there any public comment on any of the consent agenda items this evening? Not seeing any in the room? How about online? Okay, not seeing any consent, excuse me, comments on the consent agenda. Are there any council members that wish to separate any items on the consent agenda? All right, not seeing any separation? Would you like to comment on the consent agenda?
I do. Thank you so much. Sorry. Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to quickly clarify a few comments that were brought up in committee last week when we were hearing the training coordinator position expansion with the Fire Department and just kind of some of the numbers and some of the questions that my fellow council members asked in regards to kind of what the overall number that the city has to budget for and why it seems significantly higher than what you would think this position would cost. The overall budgeting for the city for this position is $240,000. This position does not make that amount of money. They make $127,000. And the reason is because of the way our insurance with firefighters work and the union contracts, we front all of it, and then the city gets reimbursed. But we still have to have that initial amount budgeted. So it's a significantly higher amount in the upfront than some of our other positions. So I think that was a bit of confusion. Chief Davis sent out a breakdown of that. So it just kind of explains what it is that the various components of that position are. But this is definitely in line with pay scales. And bargain is part of a negotiated salary within the union. So just wanted to clarify that because there were some questions out of council last week. So thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that clarification. And obviously, that was in your committee, Councilor Anderson. So appreciate you providing that clarification there. And not seeing any other separation of any other item, then we'll go ahead and do a voice vote on the consent agenda, Ms. Trimble.
Voting on item eight, consent agenda, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And any opposed? All right, that's unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes our consent agenda. There are no regular business items this evening. Regular business this evening on this, on this agenda basically constitute committee reports. And that wraps up all of our business items. We will now turn it over to public comment on non-agenda items. Come on up.
It's beautiful weather out there. Just think in a couple of months, the frost, the water will take those wonderful cavities in those roads and make them humongous for you for next spring. I think the city and the county should go out and fill up those cavities because ice likes to make them a whole lot bigger for your front-end wheels to drop in and send the alignment to the shop. Think about it. Let's fill in the water cracks because in March, we don't use as much salt and we get the frost and it makes them bigger and it gets run over by the tires and they get bigger. And asphalt costs more money next spring to fill in a bigger hole. Next one, I took a nice little ride along River Road. There is some improvements where the traffic, what is the traffic count on River Road? And if the traffic count gets big enough, could we have a redevelopment with a wider asphalt and a riding, walking lane? We don't have to have full sidewalks because I don't think that's a city totally residential street. It's a street that could have improvements with asphalt aprons on the side of the main drag. It could use it. And if, there's a lot of pedestrians I've seen. And what is the traffic count? Oh, Pavarello now. I come up there at noon, locked up my bicycle. Do I look threatening that you wanted to assault me? And he was running his mouth. And I said, you think I'm paying attention? I just walked away. He wanted to create an incitement. Well, I just had lunch, called the police, got a file number because he took the incitement right in the camera where I park my bicycles in case I get another stabbing. God forbid I get a stabbing on my motor vehicle. How would you like to wake up with four flat tires and you got to get to work? So anyways, when I was at the bus station, he didn't open his mouth threatening under the cameras of the bus station, the same guy. He had a triple look at me. He didn't say anything. He just walked across. Why is it that people go around threatening people for incitement for something better to do? And how many people out there in the homeless shelter get threatened of the matter of fact? How many people get threatened on the sidewalk called John Doe Public? Am I that popular out there as Santa Claus?
Thank you, Mr. Spitzmacher. I think you just found an opportunity this coming season. You might want to think about something like that. Any other public comment this evening? Any other public comment tonight? Not seeing any in the room? How about online? All right, not seeing any online either. So that wraps up our public comment on non-agenda items. The next is communications from the mayor. And the only thing I really have to say after listening to some public comment is that when we can make a choice to de-escalate and not raise conflict or not raise, not necessarily conflict, but aggression, it sure is an easier way to have dialogue and get along in the world. So thank you for those comments. And that's all for me this evening. I'll go ahead and turn it over to folks in the room here, Councilor Cheryl.
I just want to remind people that flu shots and COVID shots are out. I got mine the other day. My arm still hurts, but I felt completely fine. But it is flu season, so get your updated vaccinations.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that public service announcement. It is the season. Council Basara?
I'll pass. Thank you.
Okay, you bet. Council Savage?
I'll pass. Thank you.
Okay, Council Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Just follow up on one of your proclamations. I appreciate all of them. Actually, they're always very interesting. But it's important to recognize suicide prevention. And I think especially in industries where it might not be okay to talk about that sort of thing. And I think that Officer Campbell, excuse me, Councilman Campbell, sorry, retired Officer Campbell, mentioned this a little bit in his comments following up on that. But I just want to reiterate that it's okay to not be okay. And we are a state that has the suicide crisis lifeline, the hotline. And I would just encourage people to reach out if they need something. And thank you for bringing attention to that tonight.
My real pleasure, and thank you very much for your comments. Council Nugent, 988, folks. That's always an option for anybody out there. And you're not alone. Thank you. All right, Council Anderson.
Just very quickly, I also did get my flu shot and my COVID shot all in the same arm. And I spent the day moving around like a weird person, but it did help with keeping the soreness at bay. So yes, encourage folks to go ahead and do that because there are a lot of people in our community who are still immunocompromised and need all of us to do the right thing. Despite, you know, they get the shots, they, they're not covered the same way we are. And, you know, personally, my mother's one of those. And so we do everything we can to try to keep her safe. And I know every one of us knows somebody that we love that could be in that situation. So do the right thing, stay at home if you don't feel well. Just common sense things that I think we all learned during COVID and should continue on afterwards. And yes, thank you to Mr. Nugent for, again, highlighting that it is not, it is okay to be not okay. As someone who has had a lot of not okay moments in the last year, appreciate that and normalizing it, I think, just helps bring out, take away the stigma of it. And, you know, just reach out to those. And you'd be amazed when you admit that you're not okay, how many people will step up and really be there for you. So do that when you can.
Well said. Thank you, Council Anderson. Councilor Jones? All right, you bet. Council Vasika?
Thanks. I just wanted to remind folks that we do not have council next Monday. I really appreciate when the public comes down here, but don't come next Monday. And then also, for the River Road General Council meeting is tomorrow night from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Garden City Harvest on River Road. And I biked down River Road too, and I highly agree with Mr. Spitzmacher's comments about needing, if not a sidewalk, then at least some sort of barrier or some sort of designated asphalt that is kind of similar to what we have on Curtis, where it's just kind of off to the side where you can ride your bike or walk without fear of getting hit by a car. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vasika. Council? Carlino?
And I can pass.
Okay, thank you very much. How about folks that are online? Any council comments this evening?
I'll pass. Thanks.
All right, you bet. Council Campbell?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just really quick, since this is the last meeting before the end of the month, October 1st is the deadline. For a property owner here in Missoula to get a property tax rebate, this is the $675 that was signed in 2023 by Governor Jim Forte. You have until October 1st. And I would encourage folks, if you think you're due a property tax rebate, go to GetMyRebate.MT.gov and make sure you get her done before October 1st. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you very much for that reminder, Council Campbell. And Council Nelson? I see that you came on screen. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, then that wraps up all of our council comment as well. And that then wraps up our meeting. So I will adjourn our meeting this evening at 7:32 p.m. Thanks, everybody.
We had two presentations this last week in regards to suicide. One was Coming Out of Darkness of It. And yesterday was the Nami Walk Along the River.